Yeah.
That's fine.
Cause I didn't know, I didn't know if I should do anything.
I saw it, yeah.
I called him, I was like, hey, you know, I'll just go whole.
Yeah.
He's like, last year I did. I'm not gonna go whole.
Captain, that's fine.
And I think their, I think Mossberg's name is bad again after Scott because Cal had all that turf left over from the barn that he donated. He goes, just, you know, either make the clubhouse or something.
Yeah. He said, he had.
My youngest just came back to Pendleton because they.
Oh, yeah.
Changed his number to thirty. But it's my number, what Scott had is my number. Third, third day was number forty-four.
Oh, that's fine.
You got tickets for it?
I guess the earth's putting it to music and beats and it's the sea sand. Well, no, it's not extended, it's just a sea sand.
Really good in your neighborhood?
Yeah. Nothing new to report.
Yeah? We, well, we walked through the morning.
Yeah.
Joe pulled from his lighter.
Oh, no.
I thought we'd been old.
Those are fighting parts, don't say that.
He and I were about to say, hey.
See ya.
Thank you.
I gave my tickets to my mother-in-law. I was like, we had a pretty full agenda. I'm not sure when I'll get there, so you just go ahead.
Yeah, it's time, what's up?
Lisa Floyd said, would you come and judge the picnic setups? Cause like, you're supposed to have like a theme for your little area. And I said, Lisa, I would love to, but like, I have counsel. Oh, I forgot you had counsel. I was like, yeah. I said, I'll do that when I get there.
I think Greg, I think he's retired.
Okay.
He may be retired now.
Nice lady.
Can he teach you how you people, huh?
Yeah.
Huber? Yeah, I think he's, he has this, well, he's probably done.
Done, yeah.
He's probably done.
Let's go ahead and call a meeting to order. Have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Correct?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Marissa Skaggs.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Chet Baer.
Here.
All present accounted for.
Okay, uh, all of us had a chance to read the minutes from the August twelfth meeting. Any corrections or discussions needed? If not, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, second. For the approval of minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion carried five oh. Court Treasurers report.
Alrighty, as you all see here, we've got all the sheets in front of you. All the bills are paid to date. Our general fund is in excellent shape, seven hundred and twelve thousand. I don't have anything new. We're, Mr. Attorney, we're not talking about the COVID money tonight. You didn't get that?
I did not, sir. We will have that at your October meeting for both a plan and possible appropriation portion of this.
Okay, alrighty.
Cause I know more than one of you have talked to me about that.
Yeah, okay.
If there is anything that you have in mind as a project, please put me with me or Chet or however you want to do it.
The one that I give you, the generator.
Yes.
I'd like to start with that.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Any questions for the Court Treasurers' report? If not, I need a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve Court Treasurers' report.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second on the Court Treasurers' report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Approved. Department reports, Fire Chief.
Good evening, all.
Good evening, all.
Um, the real brief synopsis of our runs, obviously, I know we were up again, but only this time eight runs from a previous year, so it was kind of a slow month for us, if you will. We had our open house for our Public Safety Day. It was a great turnout. Appreciate everybody showing up. The Kwanis for cooking hamburgers, they cooked possibly, I think it was seven hundred that we purchased. And there was maybe less than a hundred left over for everybody to take home for a snack later on that evening, so definitely a good turnout. Everybody that showed up with the Sheriff's Department cannon demonstration, Lifeline helicopter, obviously had to leave early due to the weather and stuff that was coming in, so they had to, had to get out of there. But with, you know, still being the COVID issue, there was a, a, a good turnout and was very pleased with that. The burn camp, uh, the collection that took place here at the intersection of State Street and Pelham Avenue, I think they collected just over fifteen hundred dollars for the Richard Burn Camp. So, um, people were starting to give back to, uh, the burn camp and stuff, so that was, that was a good thing to, to have. So, other than that, that's it. Do you guys have anything for me?
Any questions for the Chief?
I do need to add one thing with, um, with what has happened, if you guys have been following the social media and stuff, as of September first, uh, the Eagle Safari Department has disbanded their department. And their members, fourteen of them, have joined the Pendleton Fire Department as well as the Pendleton Emergency Ambulance. So that's been a very good transition. Uh, their members have, uh, attended all of our meetings, both on the fire side as well as the ambulance side. We're actually running two staffed ambulances twenty-four seven, three sixty-five now, you know, basically Station One and Station Two out of the Eagle Station. So we're running both of those ambulances now and it's been a, and it's been a very good thing. And I know they've done a tremendous job of coming on board, uh, not had any issues whatsoever with that. The transition has been very smooth, um, you know, very, very excited about it, yeah. I think, you know, for the potential to move forward, I think it was a, it was a good thing.
Let McQuillan comment on that. With that beginning on September the first, the contract that Steve and the Chief worked out with Ingalls commenced on September the first, where they're gonna be paying a monthly amount, and that's money we never received before for a covering account. So, I'm very pleased with that. I fought that for six years. Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
Chief Far, let's see him. Judge? Let's see him. Park's not here. Kayla, you got anything?
Just your report, the paper report.
That's fine. Town Manager?
Yeah, can you just have my slides real quick? We just, um, we'll go down, projects, the Water Street is substantially complete. We're gonna do, create the punch list tomorrow, do a walkthrough of baling. There's some things that you can see, the Navy down, there's some more filter, there's a curb that needs to be completed. But it's drivable right now, it's paved, it looks very nice, and just in time for, uh, weekend activities, so I think it's turned out to be a really good project.
Did we get the cones up?
I'm gonna check that first thing in the morning. If not, they'll be, they were supposed to do it today.
Cones up and the other stuff off the sidewalk, okay.
Our guys cleaned up some of it today. Okay, so it looks like we're out of State Street on the other project. Uh, there's still some minor stuff that'll need to be done, but for the most part, we won't need to shut down State Street for a, totally for a long, for all day, like we've been doing. Probably until we pave it, and that'll be at the end of the project. Uh, we're starting to work on, um, the Franklin Street end of it. So they were in there a lot longer than they should have been. Couple of angry moments here and there between the contracts. Anyway, um, they're good guys, they're good guys. Plus, at the same time, we got a lot of the, uh, gas companies doing a lot of work. And then the guys have started another project, the, uh, at Madison Main, that, uh, town drain there is completely almost, uh, plugged up. We got a new excavator in there. Um, Building Department's doing a good job, still a lot of teamwork in, uh, with their, their new hire in there. They're, they're running on all six pistons right now, doing a really good job. The Street Department's got several projects going, and one of the problems they do have is they get into it, find out they need a cast dig or something like that. And so supplies are just hard to get, as we all know. So sometimes it's a surprise that they need to buy some extra parks and it's just time to get them. Electric Department, they did a community service, did the electric, the soccer field electric jobs in anticipation of the Bring Your Own Picnic, um, which is tomorrow.
That's right.
Tonight.
And then the Water Department, between, um, that's them moving on, and we've got, um, one person out sick for probably at least ten days. So it's a one-man show right now, with Zane, or your most junior guy. The other departments are pitching in, and, uh, Donnie's pitching in also. So, uh, that's all I have unless, if any other questions, some of the subjects you might wanna cover coming up next.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at on Franklin Street there, Scott?
It'll be the end of the fall.
End of fall?
Yeah. I think, technically, I think they should only have six full days they could have been done with State Street. They had trouble with supplies, that sort of thing.
Gas company.
Logistics issue, but, um, hopefully they're gonna fly right through Franklin.
Two good projects, Water Street and that one.
I'm happy with Water Street.
Yeah, it looks good, yeah, it looks good.
Any more questions for the Town Manager? Thanks, Scott.
Yep.
Okay, let's go to new business. Uh, Scott, why don't you talk, ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-three, ordinance for Madison Avenue traffic.
So, I've talked to a lot of you, that crossing, especially now that the trains are faster, exceeds design standards, which makes the town very, uh, vulnerable to lawsuits. And so, we don't wanna lose that crossing, so we need to keep it active, but yet we definitely can't allow pedestrians or bicyclists and motor and, uh, regular traffic to cross on it. So, uh, we're gonna keep it active by keeping it open to emergency vehicles only, which is, um, important, especially in the future, if we ever need to have a s- another crossing, we can trade that location with that. Plus, uh, EMS, police, it is really hard to get on the tracks, um, from Madison Avenue North up to, uh, North Pelham Avenue. I know I experienced it when I was on the fire park with Chris. We've had some car trains where they get pushed all the way down and, and just getting a person up there with no equipment is, you know, really hard. So we need that entrance, be able to enter the tracks down there with, uh, some of our lighter vehicles. So that's why we're proposing to do, while we've done what we've done. Um, so anybody have any questions on that?
Shouldn't the ordinance say west of nine?
Yes.
Do we have a time?
It says east of nine.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Well, you could already put state road thirty-eight and that.
There you go.
So whatever the council prefers there.
It's quite a challenge to enforce, I think on.
It is, people gotta get used to it.
Let me ask a technical question, I guess, to the lawyer. We've got signs up there that says, you can't turn west off the highway, now we're just going up over the track. There's nothing in this, that I'm reading anyway, about, in other words, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we put a stop sign up, we gotta have an ordinance saying we put a stop sign up here.
That's right.
To enforce that. Do we need something else in this? To be able to enforce?
Actually, I know this, cause it's an engineering issue. Uh, that is, those signs that say no left turns, coming, going force thirty-eight.
Says do not enter.
That's an N dot sign, that's their sign. Uh, and then the right, no right turns, coming off of sixty-seven, going the other way out of town, that's an N dot sign, so it's enforceable.
There's signs on both sides of the road going, facing a river track going west. That says do not enter.
Okay, I misunderstood your question.
Do we need some kind of verbiage so that if someone turns west and goes over the tracks, that the police, I mean, is it a violation?
I think this ordinance handles that. Along with those signs and any additional signage, we would put out about emergency use only would.
Okay.
Would trigger this ordinance, but, but the required notice out there, if, if we pass this ordinance, obviously.
Okay.
I thought what you were asking is, could a police officer write a ticket because of the, there was a no left turn and they did a left turn? Which I think they can.
Yeah, cause I called you that day that those signs went up, cause I stopped and there was a lady that pulled in there. And then backed out right in the middle of traffic. I was going, okay, we got these signs up right here at the railroad crossing. But nothing down sixty-seven. And then we got them down way past the high school. They say nothing going over.
There's, the, the state has put up no left turn and no right turn, depending on which direction you're coming from.
Okay, I haven't been down there this week, but.
Yeah, they're temporary, they're gonna put better, more permanent signs. Um, it's still, the crossing arm still works, so I wish if somebody does make that mistake, it just continue on through. It's the old saying, you can't break the slate.
Any other questions or comments about this ordinance?
The only, the only reason why we're doing this is it's engineering, it's not, it's, there's no wall or anything, I just, I don't see how we'd be held.
Okay, so.
Responsible if it's been there for.
So, the main, two, two main things. One, changes with the speed of the train, they're a lot faster now. Your sight distance to look left or right to be able to see a train in time, um, for pedestrian and motor vehicle is down to like, one is twen- one way is twenty miles an hour, the other's thirty. Those are fifty mile an hour trains here, I think they can go up to seventy. So that's one engineering standard that's grossly violated, which, that makes us susceptible.
But wouldn't that.
Then the other one is, when you go up, you have to be able to see your sight distance forward, you have to be able to see something three feet high. At some, one of the directions, you can't see something that's five feet high, which is another car, another person, another body. So.
Yeah, cause arms should be coming down quicker now, especially if the train is going through at fifty and fifty plus miles an hour. I just, I just see us having a hard time trying to even control that.
Well.
Without causing more accidents.
Right, our only option is.
On sixty-seven because of the sign saying, I'm gonna turn there because, well, the road's open and I've done it for forty years.
I know.
And now, oh, I can't enter here, now I'm gonna back out, well, now I'm causing an accident on sixty-seven, it's gonna be worse than.
So we had that when we closed it. I mean, the only other option is to close it. Uh, it, I mean, I'm surprised we haven't gotten this TV yet for the, the cinema.
Who, who governs the speed of the train? Anybody?
I'm sure it meets federal regulations.
Probably Department of Transportation, I guess.
Yeah.
So luckily you cannot entertain some Colorado's slowing the speed of a train in your town.
But those are all federal regs, I believe. I, I don't know if it's true.
I'm pretty sure they are.
Doesn't the railroad own a certain amount of area on the tracks and decide it? It's like their property anyway?
Yes.
Yes, even though it's in the municipal limits, we don't, we can't regulate that part of it, I don't, I don't believe.
We can't reg- regulate it.
No.
I would, I would be surprised if we have even a foot wide strip between what N dots right away and CSX right away on the, on the east side. It's a tough problem.
Kinda like the gas company, isn't it?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? May I have a motion for ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-three for Madison Avenue traffic?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance with the change from, uh, since they east, west, make a west correction. A second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second for ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Ordinance passed.
Do we need to expedite this, right?
Yes. Thanks, Bob.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion to suspend the rules and vote for the second reading of twenty-one dash twenty-three ordinance for Madison Avenue traffic. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried also, five nine. Bob, your turn again.
Okay, I'll make a motion on, uh, or, on second for ordinance twenty-one, twenty-three with a change to, uh, west instead of east on that, on the ordinance.
Yep.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, for second reading of ordinance for Madison Avenue traffic, ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you, motion is carried, second reading, five zero. Ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four, ordinance for spot bonuses. Explain that real quickly, it's not that hard, really.
Okay, there may be situations where we have to use somebody from a different department, especially during COVID, you know, we don't have a thick fence when it comes to linemen and fire treatment plan operators. So this gives us an opportunity that if we have to prospect somebody, uh, that, uh, that we have a way to pay them, you know, they're normal, it's got a great checking balance. I can authorize it, but I have to get approval from either the Court Treasurers or the county. That way I just can't get creative, buy that for our friends.
I'll sign it.
Everybody, any questions about this?
I think it's logical, you need a little fatality, particularly with all the illness and all the COVID, it's gonna get worse before it gets better.
Yeah.
We've had to use this in the last week, okay, because of the Water Department. It was time to get it in place. Any other questions or comments? If not, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, for ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four for spot bonuses. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you.
Make, make a motion to, uh, suspend the rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for ordinance, for second reading of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four. Ordinance for spot bonuses, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Shane, your turn.
Make a motion to approve twenty-one dash twenty-four.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, for the second reading of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four, ordinance for spot bonuses, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you. Approval bid for the electric company digger.
Is this your motion for the truck?
Yep.
So, it's the, the truck that, uh, will pull a pole and, uh, reinsert a pole, it'll, it'll auger, um, the hole for a new power pole. They're expensive. Um, are we still good to go as far as mine and chassis and the rest? So we'll get to, to.
Yeah, our chassis aren't available for about a year, so.
Yeah, so it, this is, in other words, the point is this may get dragged out, we might not just have to pay two seventy-one upfront. So that was, there was only one bid, it was two seventy-one, one twenty-five, plus delivery. Um, that was for Moltech, and that's who, uh, was bought from the past, and so they're responsible there.
Where's that made at? I mean, when you said plus delivered.
Fort Carolina.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about the bid?
You talked about the time delay getting the chassis, do we have to pay them anything down to get it rolling, to get it in the system? Uh, do you know?
In order to break up the cost, they will allow us to pay for the chassis and then pay for the unit in two separate payments, if they wanna do that.
Yeah.
Right now, they're eighteen, it's only four months before we finish the project. But if I understand your question, do they want that chassis money upfront now?
Something to lock the price in, I guess.
Well, we'll find out, that's a good point.
Yeah, cause you know, a year from now, they may.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like that.
That's a car dealer coming out.
Used car dealer.
I mean, that, that price is for a twenty, twenty-three jack.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. What, what do we need to do on this, Jeff?
We just have to formally accept the, just a vo- voice, uh, that, yes.
Okay, okay. And we only have the one bid?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for the electric company digger.
Same.
Shane and Steve, make a motion to approve the bid for the electric company digger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Buy it. Approval for bid for trash service.
Excuse me a minute. Scott, are you gonna sign the bid and everything, give it back to the people you got the original? Okay.
Okay, uh, we've put out the bid, the trash service, which starts one November. Um, we grow actively, send it out to at least six or seven. But we only had, uh, one respondent, they resp- I, I'm sure they responded as if they had competition. So I would recommend we accept it. I'll read the fees real quick, and this is for the trash part. And I'll just give the per home, the twelve eighty, thirteen twenty-two, thirteen sixty-six, and fourteen eleven for each of the next four years. Recycling, the first year, uh, they did it per year on, on the, the bid, so it'll sound like a high amount, but it's per, this is per year. So the first year, the first cart's eighty-four, second cart's forty-eight, second year eighty-six point seven seven, then forty-nine, fifty-eight for the second. Third year, eighty-nine, sixty-four for the first cart, fifty-one, twenty-two for the second cart. Fourth year, first cart ninety-two point five nine, second cart fifty-two point nine. So I just need a vote, voice vote to accept the bid.
Any questions? You're gonna get questioned on this, there's no doubt.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody needs to understand what he just went through with the numbers. That's for, all of you, I sent the four scenarios of, of it. And it breaks it down by year, and what he read to you, and what we're gonna do is scenario four, the last one. That correct, Scott?
It's up to you. I think that, we'll do that next month at the next, um, Town Council meeting, you'll vote.
It has to be a public hearing.
It has to be a public hearing with it too, to set the fee.
Okay. So we're just approving the bid.
We're just approving the bid.
Then we'll have a public meeting. Next meeting, is that what you're saying, Jeff?
Yes, it'll be a public hearing to consider the, the rate change at that point, yeah.
Tom. When I looked at the information that was sent through the email, I saw that, that, that we, the town was losing money on, on, on the trash pickup. Is that correct?
For, just a, cause there was a rate increase, so the last, so the, the fourth year's rate kicked in. And so there was, uh, a surplus built up over the four years, well, probably more than that. And then, so the town per month was losing a little bit, and it dwindled down, and it's almost come, it's almost perfect timing. We're a little bit negative, but insignificant. Five thousand dollars, I don't, I don't think five.
On the current contract.
On the current contract.
The new contract, when I'm talking about top of my head, it was about, over a four-year period, is about fifteen thousand dollars per year. And we end up sixty thousand dollars at the end of the four-year contract, instead of losing money.
Now, did we take out the limb pickup?
We took out the limb pickup.
So they took that off the?
Right. That was not part of the bid. They still will have heavy trucks pick up once a month. And, uh, publish the phone number, cause you have to call, cause they may have to switch trucks. If you got something that needs a flatbed, then they'll literally bring the flat, fat, flatbed. And then, uh, you're limited to three large items per month, so, you know, refrigerator, your stove, and your washer, one month.
Believe me, between me and Willie, especially and Scott, when we met with these people from, I forget the name of them.
Best way.
Best way. The gentleman sitting in that chair squirreling, cause I, we kept asking a lot of questions, you know, about the cost versus taking, I was hung up on taking services and raising the price, okay? And Scott knew that upfront, and I told him we wasn't gonna do that. But between the price of gasoline and their fees, it's, it's very reasonable looking at what other towns are paying. And we won't be losing money. Cause we shouldn't do anything if we lose money.
Yeah, that was my main concern.
True.
Looking at everything, yeah.
Yeah. Do they own the landfill?
Uh, yeah, they do.
It's their, their property.
So as far as the residents are concerned, the service will be the same, except now we'll, uh, publish the, the town pickup plan.
And leaves.
And leaves.
Okay, uh, guess I need a motion to approve the bid for the trash service.
One thing, in reference to the one bid, uh, we sent it to four different companies, and three of them, there's copies here for the board, where they chose not to bid. I assume they have enough business and something, but we went the proper way to do it.
We definitely wanted to be competitive. I think it was competitive even though one bid.
Yeah. They didn't know, I mean, the morning we opened the bid, we got the.
We had three. The two, two were no bid.
If we could, Mr. President, if we can make that contingent on the results of the public hearing next, uh, we'll accept the bid contingent on the results of the public hearing next, uh, next month. I know they're the only game in town, so it's a foregone conclusion, but I, we really can't accept the, even the rates in there without the public hearing.
So we don't need to do the approval?
You could, you could approve the, the vendor, uh, pending the outcome of the public hearing, absolutely, to let them know that they're the choice.
Okay, let's do it that way. We've proven the vendor, the quote, tonight only, to be ready for the public hearing in the October meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the vendor pending the public hearing in October. Is that the right verbiage for you? Okay.
Same.
I'll second that.
I got a motion of second for the approval of the bid for the trash service. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried, or approvals carried. Okay, approval of I sixty-nine quadrant master plan.
Okay, so, um, real quick, there's a gentleman here that was our consultant, but, uh, we've gone, we've gone through the process. Um, there's been public input on it. Uh, it was approved by the planning commission last week, and, uh, so that counts as your first reading. So this just takes one reading to accept the plan, and, uh, can, Mr. Chairman, just unless you want a free explanation of it, we'll just go right to it.
I've had a couple, couple of questions on the, a couple of comments on the, uh, this afternoon, actually, about the Sixty-seventh Street project, which goes to be through, uh, this, this parcel, this project. On that, concerned about truck traffic on that, if that, if that road comes to be. Cause we're aware they're going to environmental study as we speak. That's what, three or four-year project, we're what, one year down? Two or three years ago, I suppose, on the, that piece of it. And we're also aware that Congress, they've got a bill that they're studying to increase, uh, funding for infrastructure work, so if that occurs, that might create a, uh, uh, might improve on the possibility of getting federal funding for projects such as that, for example, particularly if you're shovel-ready. Uh, had some comments though about, concerned about truck traffic coming out of Anderson, coming out on thirty-eight, pick up the interstate. Of course, depending which way they're going on, on the roundabouts, uh, whether we would see an increase in truck traffic. I think it would be with this, it probably would, on the just, the flow of traffic, particularly coming out of Anderson, Nestle's and other plants there, that you would see an increase in truck traffic, but I know two comments I've gotten that was concerned about increasing truck traffic, roundabout issues that we have here, particularly if they're going north. Uh, uh, you have to cross the bridge and negotiate the roundabouts, what kind of an impact that would have on the, uh, on the town itself and flow of traffic. I know that's probably something, I mean, that's, that's a project that's, that is moving forward, and that we've had a lot of discussions about that particular piece, that the, uh, I don't have any kind of answer on the truck traffic that will undoubtedly increase if this road does come to be. It is an important piece of that.
So, so first of all, that's not part of the quadrant.
I mean, it goes through.
That's the key right there.
It goes through.
That's the key.
I mean, that gets, it shows it just because, um, just as a, a physical, yeah, because it's a future plan, you have to account for it being there in the future. But you're not approving that alignment at all.
I understand, just referring to comments that I've gotten about that, cause people are aware that does come through the, uh, the studied area on that.
Do you wanna answer the question on Sixty-seventh Street? Um, but for the most part, uh, that's up to you. The town, that's their, they'll be their road, so how you dictate who can use it and that sort of thing.
This plan really provides some information about what could happen around the Sixty-seventh Street project. As you guys know, the city of Anderson is the lead on this project, the Sixty-seventh Street project. Uh, a very small segment of it does run through the town of Pendleton. But having a plan like this in place that just gives some concept to the kinds of uses we would wanna see along Sixty-seventh Street does allow us to basically, uh, control that corridor, more so to see the way the town would like to develop. So if we don't want a bunch of truck, truck traffic through that area, then this allows us to put in a, uh, uses on either side of that street that might limit big truck traffic through that area and not make it really comfortable for them. So that, that's something I would say on this. This is a companion, uh, in, to the Sixty-seventh Street construction plan, but it's not at all, uh, you know, Sixty-seventh Street's still gonna be there regardless, because that plan was developed. Do you have any other questions or any questions for all?
Yeah. I think, I, I liked the piece of work, Connor, so I, I think it's a good piece of work, and I, I think it, uh, is certainly, uh, beneficial in town if we, if we go with this, but the, uh, I do have some thinking back in time on the Sixty-seventh Street project. On, I hear what you're saying, and, and on that, but I obviously can't speak for Anderson, but I would think they would, if we're, I'm anticipating Anderson, why they, they're the ones that wanted to move forward this project a few years ago, if memory serves me right. And I would think their thinking would be another avenue for truck traffic, because of the commercial development they have in that area. So I think they'd be thinking about particularly truck traffic going south, it would be easier for them to take this road if it's built and dump out on sixty-nine off of thirty-eight. So I would think if we, we are having reflections on that, or concerns on that, or having doubts that we would be good to go with truck traffic come through there, I would think that's something we should probably have a conversation with them, saying, hey, guys, this, we have some reservations about truck traffic, cause I think that would have some impact on their larger piece of the project to, uh, to do this project.
I think that's what it was talked about, was they wanted heavy truck traffic going through there from Nestle and.
Just couldn't put her off Sixty-seventh Street, which runs clear out past Meyer. Okay, I mean, let's be.
So, so, so the, relative, back to the quadrant plan.
Yeah.
If you look at the use on the Pendleton side of it, that does not promote truck traffic. Um, because the use of that area would be residential, and then eventually when the town hit enough population to be able to support retail out there and restaurants, this, this plan delays that until this town is strong enough, or large enough, that that would not gut the downtown area of businesses. And the planning commission voted for that population earmarked to be at twenty thousand. As you know, the town can be as big as forty thousand based on our current area. Um, I don't know why any truck would come down south from Anderson when they can get on sixty-nine north, or get on sixty-nine to the north. And it doesn't matter anyway, cause you could just, like we do with State Street, know through trucks, so.
See, and I agree with what you're saying, and, and understand that, but I think if we're, can't speak for Anderson, I would think they're thinking truck traffic. Because Nestle's and others there are heading south, so it probably makes sense for the driver to think, hey, I'm going this new road, picking it up. So I think if we have reservations on that, then we, it would, to me, it seemed like we should have some discussion with them, say, hey, we, we have some concerns about that development. If you're looking at primarily a truck avenue.
When council and governors was here for the public open house thing, they.
But they're a fair plan for the thoroughfare plan.
They kind of acted like, uh, we don't really know what's going on with Sixty, I mean, they didn't have like a definite timeline, they didn't, they said that there was even a question about the alignment, what they had proposed years ago, that now that piece of land, there was a question about that. Um, and, I mean, I don't think any of us really have the crystal ball on this, to know what their timeframe.
I think they said it was like a five or ten-year timeframe, you didn't do all the survey and everything like that. I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head, it was a long process, that's why it is.
Yeah, we're really at a, a point of transition in Pendleton geographically, and so far as time is concerned. If you take a look at the quadrant plan schematic, it's up there, you'll notice that future one hundred forty-sixth street actually connects in with that extension of Sixty-seventh Street. And we all know that one hundred forty-sixth street in Hamilton County is a much different, much more residential, a boulevard appeal, um, through, well, hype all the way across to Zion, you know, like this. This is one of the towns in sixty-five, up Chicago. So, um, so that, that's, uh, another, you know, we have a choice. Whether we as a community wanna think more Nestle, truck traffic, that kind of thing, or whether we wanna use a, this is a point transition on one hundred forty-sixth street coming out of Hamilton County up to that point, in a way that is uniquely planned, I guess.
To- totally agree with that on your comments, so then that, they're gonna like the quadrant study, I think it's a good piece of work, I think it looks really, I like it on that. And then again, I think on the, I think to be fair to Anderson, I think, do they understand that we have, we would have control for like a better word, from one thirty-two coming south, and that we may, uh, ban truck traffic, possibility of there, and that they understand that, that could be, could be an issue down the road. It's a good piece of work, I think, I like the quadrant study very, very well done.
Alan Satahashi is here representing Ken Womack tonight. If you have any questions about this plan, or if you want to have him speak to us.
Thanks, Caleb. Any more questions or comments?
We have a little comment on the, uh, the Keystone piece of that, on the, so I was understanding we're not going to do anything, but that's, it would be, it would be down the road.
Yeah, Caleb, you wanna explain that some more?
Yeah.
I think that's the brilliance of this plan, and we would, shows we're, we're smart.
Yeah.
So.
Good piece of work.
Did, do you want a further explanation of it?
Well, I understand, I think as far as for the public on that, on the, uh, we're, we're saying you're not, we're not gonna develop that area now, which I total agree with that. Concentrate on what we have on that, but then, uh, the, what, what's the objective of restricting that? Say somebody owns a park store out there and they wanna build hotel in that area or something, on how that would play out as far as what we're promoting is within. If somebody comes along and they want to build, they're getting a hotel, how that would play out, that would be, say, in the Keystone area in that proposed project. But the town, we're, say, ten thousand, we're not at that twenty thousand point.
The planning commission has withheld, basically, uh, some permission to amend that, a number of the right project comes along. But the idea behind this is to save that land, so that the, uh, the ultimate development that goes out there is really, uh, a special development that is, uh, key to Pendleton's success. However, given that it is right on our interstate and our downtown is considerably off our interstate, and, uh, that we were tapped out of liquor licenses, is one, one thing at this time. Um, if you end up with a bunch of chains out there and some truck stops and stuff like that, uh, that could really kinda get downtown businesses a little bit. So that's one thing that we've kind of been looking at, is how do we protect downtown and continue to throw some efforts at the downtowns and grants, um, revitalization efforts, all that good stuff, and then hold this area out for later, when you've got a little more population, some more re-pops, which is what the extensive market study that Ken Womack did shows me really, um, would meet before that, before that area gets developed. So I encourage you all to look at the market study, which is, uh, at the end of that plan.
It prevents there from there being a second downtown. There's so many towns that build a bypass, whatever, and then they ended up with a new center of gravity outside of their downtown, and the downtown just died, cause there was no investment.
I agree with the objective. I think there, uh, we put a lot of, uh, uh, effort into retaining the historic footprint that we have, so we don't wanna lose that to something to the west, so total agreement with that, just for a clarification on how that Keystone piece could evolve if somebody wanted to develop something in, in that area. Thank you, Caleb.
Okay, the approval of I sixty-nine quadrant master plan, everybody needs to understand that this is really the second reading, because the planning department gave it approval their last meeting. So, any questions or comments? Come on in.
Yes, I have my, my usual spiel to start with and a few other, other points here. Thank you for, uh, hearing me. My name's Edward Walenty. Do you mind if I pull a mask off on this?
Yeah.
Oh, so much fun. My name's Edward Walenty, and I'm with Decker Lawyer Maynard. I represent some landowners on the, uh, west side of, east side of sixty-nine, directions, they're fine, uh, west side of sixty-nine. And, um, our first comment is, while you are saying this is the second reading this evening, you need to have a first reading through a validly constituted planning commission. Your planning commission does not meet the statutory requirements necessary to be a validly constituted planning commission. So the reading that occurred last Thursday would not be a first reading, and this would not be a second reading under the statute. That's the first and usual objection that I have. Secondly, the landowners, both Mr. Urbans, uh, who owns property located through the proposed one forty-sixth street extension, and several landowners, uh, on the north side. and several landowners, uh, on the north side of thirty-eight, uh, have not had significant engagement with any, any member of the town, the consulting firm, or other individuals in charge of this project. I believe there was one meeting with, uh, yourself, Mr. Babs, and Ms. Skaggs regarding the sixty-seventh street project, which I know is separate from the master plan, but intricately connected here with this plan that we're discussing this evening. And, uh, we feel that there's not sufficient engagement with the landowners and discussion about the actual landowners on the ground, of what is going to happen and what the plan is for this town. Looking at this plan, and you look at your proposed plan, particularly on the Urbans ground, south of thirty-eight, you have proposed residential with busy, business district, or your reserved Keystone development, along with, uh, looks like a park reserved in the forest area of that lot, which honestly was exactly what Mr. Urbans put, that this council has attempted to wantfully remove from him, had planned for development. And because there was no engagement with Mr. Urbans on that point, this town is now engaged in litigation with Mr. Urbans on that point. Um, and, uh, I, I can't speak to the cost that the town is bearing, but my guess is, is that it's not insignificant. Uh, the landowners of the north side of the street would like to avoid that, that discussion, and the kind of the, the trading of the go-bars, and would like to have a more engaged discussion with the town on this point. So, uh, also, in looking with the sixty-seventh street, we find it, again, it's hard to discuss this plan without, without bringing sixty-seventh street in because they're so intricately connected, so you know they're two different projects, but they're tied at the hip, so to speak. There, there seems to be an entire lack of consensus of who to speak to. In our meeting with Ms. Skaggs and Mr. Babs, we were instructed to reach out to Anderson, as Anderson's driving the project. And we did reach out to the various individuals discussed at that meeting, or their replacements, as some of them retired or whatever, uh, seeking more information. And we were told to come back to the government of Pendleton from, from those sources, which, which does go to the point that it is ultimately Pendleton that will, will decide where this road goes through its territory, what traffic is held on that road. I think it makes sense from Anderson's point of view, I agree with you, Mr. Jones, that they would like to put truck traffic down on that road. I think that geographically makes sense when you look at Nestle's location as well as sixty-nine. Others may disagree. However, that is something that should be discussed. So are, uh, both Mr. Urbans and the landowners to the north side of the road, would respectfully request that this be at least tabled for some time, or will be tabled until such time as a discussion with the landowners can be had, as well as a reconstitution pending the planning commission. Thank you for your, your time. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to discuss anything. That's where I have the seat.
Thanks, Ed. Okay, I still need an approval, or a motion for approval of I sixty-nine quadrant master plan.
Just for clarification's sake, what you would be voting on is to adopt the resolution, it's the twenty-one-ten, uh, I sixty-nine. The exhibit A of that would be the Pendleton I sixty-nine interchange document that you see in your, uh, what is it, Google Drive? And that is accepted, the favorable recommendation to include that in your comprehensive plan. So just, we'll housekeep you on that, but that's what Chet is inviting us, as I understand it.
I'll make a motion. That's just going for the comprehensive plan, correct there?
It would become part of that I sixty-nine interchange program, the master, what we call the master plan.
The quadrant master plan.
Incorporated into your, the resolution instructs the planning department to include that in the comprehensive plan. So therefore, on your future, future planning, you always have to comply with the comprehensive plan. You're saying, we're going to comply with this, that's our goal going forward. Could you change it? Heck, yes, but.
Just an added, going into that in comprehensive.
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion, a second, for approval of I sixteen quadrant master plan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Approval passed five to zero. Next on new business, approval of new s- street standards.
So, uh, part of the UDO, in conjunction, that's under the same contract, we developed the street standards, so that the street standards, uh, are in sync with the UDO. Um, and so that's what you have before you heard today. It's a lot of engineering stuff, so I don't know what I'm going to do. Our street guys had input into it, so the streets get repaired the way they like them. If somebody has a street permit, they have to repair it to what, the way our guys like it, so, um, I think it's, it's really good. We've had our, the engineering firm banning engineering, review it to, um, and it was developed by the art of engineering.
Got one question for Jeff on this, unless I'm messed up. There, now therefore be resolved, number one, reference here as exhibit, and it's blank.
The exhibit would be the street standards, that would be exhibit A, that's the street standards document that's in your Google Drive.
Okay.
I just didn't have the letter for sure, but.
Okay.
That's what it would be.
Okay. Any other questions? This, we're, we're going to see more and more of these, when I say of these. With the UDO, every time something we find in the UDO that was passed that needs, I'm not going to say corrected, updated, we're going to update it and make it work. So this is the first one from our UDO, is that right?
Nestle's document is referenced several times, so that we don't have to go back and edit our UDO in the future. Instead, we just have to edit the streets and the roads, so it makes a lot.
Any questions or comments?
It's a good logical move, if we do it.
Yes.
Needs to be done.
Can I have a motion and a second for approval of new sheets, street standards, please? Some move?
Second.
Thank you, guys. I have a motion, a second, for approval of the new street standards. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. It's approved. Thank you. Okay, next one is old business. And that is ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen, ordinance establishing the impact review board. I'll take the hit on this. I've tried and tried, and I still don't have a CPA. We do have the, uh, engineering, Joe Miller. And the realtor is Julie Snett. We will leave the CPA blank, but we still need to pass the ordinance on the first reading anyway to get it going. Correct, Chet?
We can, yeah, it's, it is in generic terms, um, for the, it could be in the generic terms. We're just effectively doing the appointment of, uh, the real estate broker and the engineering slots tonight, at the same time you're establishing the makeup of the board and the terms of the board. The terms that you see in there are one-year terms, appointed by the town council president. So they'll all roll off at the same time.
And this doesn't start till January the first anyway.
That's right.
Twenty-twenty-two, so we got time for me to get somebody to clean it up. So, uh, I'm asking for a motion and a second for ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen, establishing the impact review board.
Some move for twenty-one nineteen?
Second.
Thanks, guys. I have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried on first reading. Any more public in comments? Anybody online? Okay, just, just so everybody, I really need to do this. Tonight, it's already started, but it's Bring Your Own Picnic, that's down at the park, the soccer field. And if you don't have tickets, I got two that I'm not going to use, and I'll give to somebody. But you can get tickets there, they got banned. You bring your own meal, your own chairs, it's, it's the first time. And tomorrow and Saturday's our Heritage Fair, which brings a lot of people to town. And then Sunday, at twelve-thirty, I think it is, twelve-thirty to four-thirty is the celebration of the town of Pendleton's two-hundred-year-old plus one. And I'd like to see everybody come to that. It's a big deal, at least, I think it is. And I was actually talking to a lady that said she remembers the hundred-and-fifty-one. And they dressed up in the attire back a hundred years ago and so forth, so it could be very intere-, I think it will be very interesting. The committee has really worked hard on this celebration for almost two years, and then last year we had to cancel it. So tell your friends, neighbors, come to the celebration. They're having a luncheon, and, uh, so you get something to eat, and you can listen to people. Uh, that's all I got. Meeting adjourned.